North Adams City Council to order for March 28th, 2023. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll? Barbo? Bona?
Here.
Harpin?
Here.
Babasahan?
Here.
Oleskowitz?
Here.
Sapianza?
Here.
Shade? Wilkinson?
Here.
Blackmer here. Yes. A present we have a quorum. Please rise for a moment of silence. Please remember Justina Carlson, who we know from her appearances before the council, served on the Historical Commission and many other volunteer capacities throughout our And the pledge?
Pledge and lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in, I'm sorry, Council Barbo?
Yeah, I'd just like to enter into the record that these minutes are, are we approving first for the January meeting?
You can do the, yeah, if you want.
Are we doing them all together? How, how, what are we?
Uh, we can do, why don't we do January 31st first? Okay.
To approve. Second.
First and a second. Okay.
I just wanted to make a note to the record that these are late and out of compliance with open meeting law. It's a three-meeting quorum, as we all know, and this, these have not been turned in on time.
Actually, we canceled the last meeting, so maybe not.
If I could respond to that? We did cancel the last meeting, however, they were not presented on the agenda at the last meeting either.
Anyone else have any points, correction? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed. Motion carries. And the minutes for February 28th, 2023.
Motion to approve. Second.
Council Sapianza and Council Oleskowitz. Discussion? Council Barbo?
Um, these meetings are not accurately correct with either note-taking regarding participation and members present, nor are the votes correct.
Does anybody else have? I don't have it in my copy. Could you be more specific? Which line, which page?
Throughout, there were several votes that were taken with yays, nays, and some abstentions, and those are not recorded properly in the minutes.
Um, okay. Which ones? Which vote, which?
Would be regarding to the taxi ordinances. There's multiple corrections. If you want to go through them all, we could do that individually.
I would make the, if I could, the recommendation that they be written and submitted, and we postpone the approval of these minutes.
That would be really helpful. I like that idea.
Yep.
Does anyone want a second? So, um, motion was to approve. It's been amended to, um...
Postpone.
Postpone them till the next meeting with corrections submitted by Councilor Barbo to the clerk for corrections, and then we can decide if we can look at the minutes again.
Okay.
Okay? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hearing of visitors. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. If you would like to address, please go to the mic, either one. Keep in mind, your, the mic is not for the audience here, it is for the audience at home, so you do have to speak up and speak into the mic. Anyone want to address the council? On the agenda item? You can't hear me? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Thank you.
Okay. And you would like to address us on the agenda item? Please go to the mic. Name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
My name is Karen Gazelle. I live at 150 Ashland Street at the High Rise, and I'm just here to discuss about, to talk about Colin Todd being reelected. I don't understand why he want, why he wants to, I mean, he doesn't want to be reelected, but the point is, I don't understand why they're re-electing him when they, as chairman, he hasn't really done anything for the people of the High Rise. They don't discuss things that pertain to the High Rise. You know what I'm saying? To help the people there, because there's a lot, a lot going on, but I'm not going to get into all that. But I really feel that there should be somebody more better qualified that would be able to take up on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on an agenda item? Mic, please. Name and address for the record.
My name is Johnny Dunn. I'm at 45 Spring Street in North Adams. I also disapprove of Colin Todd's reelection. He has been very ineffective, along with other board members of the North Adams Housing Authority, so I think it's in our best interest that he is not reelected. There are a lot of issues in the two buildings that the North Adams Housing has in my neighborhood, but if we don't revamp the board, we're not going to get anywhere.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep.
Hello? My name is Mary Ann Elizio. 150 Ashland Street, apartment 212. We cannot live like this any longer. We've been trying to get some luck. We need help. And the city is supposed to help people like us. When Bill Boland made that, this place, he took care of the people in the building. My friend's here.
You need to speak into the mic so people at home can hear you.
Oh, well, I'm just, I'm trying to just, I'm doing just free-falling, you know what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm kind of upset, because I've been trying to get some resolution since I moved in there. And the last three months, it's been so progressively worse. I am currently unsafe in my apartment because of guns and night flights outside. And I welcome anyone to spend a night in that place. And that's all, I don't know when my two minutes is up. Am I going to hear a ding or something?
No.
I could go on, I could go on for two hours. As you said...
That wouldn't be good.
Okay? I'm trying to retire here. I worked my whole life. I grew up in North Adams. My family paid taxes in this town for generations, in the West End, working in the mills. I moved to, I moved to Cheshire. Unfortunately, I had to retire in North Adams, in this building. So, is that fair to me? I don't know. I pay my rent every month. I'm very quiet. I have no problems. I mean, I have some, but not enough to make, you know what I'm saying? And why is this acceptable? Because spend a night there, come and see us. Come and see a day. Trust me, it's not what it appears. And if something isn't done about the administration, well, this is just the beginning, okay? That's all I need to say. Because I'm elderly, I worked since I've been 14 years old, I deserve a quiet retirement. And the windows, and the wind, and just the unsatisfactory living conditions, I don't, I'm not going into them, like I said, two minutes is not enough time. But I'm just saying, I'm trying not to be mean, but come on, you guys.
Your two minutes is up.
Of course it is.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa. How you doing, Marie?
Good. Who else?
Hi. My name's Karen Tatro. I was born and raised in the Berkshires. I think a lot of you people know me. Actually, I grew up on Prospect Street with the Maxies. My grandfather has the job, had the job for several years, Jack O'Neill, that Colin Todd now has. And he was well-respected in this community. I'm here to oppose Colin Todd's reappointment. I've had, I, two minutes, two hours, two months is just not enough time to address what goes on there on a daily basis, and what these people has to, the adversity these people have to face. I've had a convers, I've had extensive conversations with Mr. Todd, and he, I talked, we talked about what he felt like he accomplished in three years. Did he do anything to improve the quality of anybody's life there? And he frankly didn't give me a list of anything that he's accomplished. And he said he does his due diligence. I said, "Well, due diligence to drug busts and the stabbing is your due diligence?" He said he was not aware of any complaints whatsoever, and he was not aware of the drug bust until a week after the stabbing, I believe. I have a list here that was sent to Housing Authority with all the complaints they've received that Mr. Todd has to know about. And his, his, his reason to me was that he has not received any complaints in the three years that he served. And this list of complaints, if anybody wants to see it or read it, says Housing Authority right on the top of it. If anybody wants to hear some of them, elevators, drug dealing, security guards, lack of...
None.
Heat issues. I mean, actually, some of these are probably state violations. They're probably in state violations. And a lot of these. People don't feel safe.
Your two minutes is up. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I will move on to the agenda. I am going to take Council Paper 12, that, without objection. Council Paper 12,0247, Mayor's Communication Number 38, Requesting Time to Swear Officers Willing and Eaton Into Service With The North Adams Police Department. Without objection, I will file the communication.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Beverly, Officers Willing, and Eaton to come forward onto the council floor in front of Council Blackmer.
Wait, what? Did she say my name? I couldn't hear. I think she said in front of council. Oh, okay. Just make one.
Tonight, it is my honor to present two individuals to take their oath as full-time police officers for the North Adams Police Department. Both have successfully graduated from the police academy on March 17th. Officer Alon Willing grew up in Knox, New York. He graduated from MCLA with a bachelor's degree in English Communications in 2016. While at MCLA, he played four years on the baseball team and was a member of the Holocwen Musical Theater Club. Officer Willing also worked in the North Adams Public Schools as a TA, and he remained here in North Adams to pursue his career as a police officer. He graduated from the Reserve Academy in 2021 and became a reserve officer with us in March of 2021. Officer Willing is our last reserve police officer that we have, so you go down in history. Officer Zach Eaton is a lifelong resident of the city of North Adams. He graduated from Jury High School and returned to his alma mater as a teaching assistant in the special ed department, where he loved building supportive relationships with his students and looked forward to helping them every day. Officer Eaton grew up playing football, baseball, and bowling, but yet his favorite pastime is being with his family. Officer Eaton also was a volunteer coach for the Little League, the softball team, and also the football team as well. Both Officers Willing and Eaton, I ask you, as you take your oath tonight before us, you do the following. Be certain to never betray your integrity, your character, and the public trust. I ask that you always have the courage to hold yourself accountable and accountable to others. I insist that you will always maintain the highest ethical standards and uphold the values of this administration, as well as the values and safety of this great community you serve. As the mayor of the city of North Adams, I wish you all the best, and I look forward to working with you for a very long time. I would now ask the Assistant Clerk, Tina Leonejo, to administer the oath to our new officers.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Alon Willing.
Aye, Zach Eaton.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will bear true, true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and faith and allegiance.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
To the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
And I will support the Constitution thereof.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will obey the lawful orders.
I will obey the lawful orders.
Of all my superior officers.
Of all my superior officers.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As a police officer.
As a police officer.
For the city of North Adams.
For the city of North Adams.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Agreeably to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And to the laws of the Commonwealth.
And to the laws of the Commonwealth.
And to the United States of America.
And to the United States of America.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
We'll recess for a couple of minutes if people want to make an exit. You're welcome to stay and watch sausage being made, but you're also welcome to leave.
...on because I'm getting old.
What do you want?
All right. In March, we celebrate Women's History Month. Last year, I established Mayor Maxi's Women's History Hall of Fame. This was created to honor women who've contributed to laying the groundwork for women leaders in our community and to reinforce that all of us are valued community members. This year, I'm pleased to honor two women who unfortunately aren't with us today, as well as three women who are still blazing the path of being supportive community members. Today, we will induct Lottie Harriman, Lois Quinn, Connie Tatro, Heather Bolger, and Morgan Goodell. I ask that each inductee come forward and line up in front of Counselor President Blackmer. And for family members that are here today to honor those of us who are not with us, please feel free to join us as well.
I think you're lined up here. Yeah, these are.
This is so amazing.
So why don't all of you go right in front of Counselor Blackmer and face the crowd?
Mayor.
And the Quinn family.
Mayor, I think someone hit the light switch.
That's okay.
Oh.
It's okay.
Well, no, it's dark.
Okay, come on in. It's a full house. Okay.
Any more lights on, please?
Yep, I'll get them.
Boys are mad at guys, mom.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm not playing specially. Everybody likes to get the light.
Now we're having strobe lights at council meetings.
That would give me a migraine.
So Counselor Bona, I'm going to ask you to join the crowd as well. So Lottie Harriman, nominated by Counselor Bona. Lottie Harriman was born in North Adams on May 20th, 1898. She attended local schools, including Jury High School, and then studied at the Wilford Academy in Boston. She married Arthur Harriman and began raising her family here in North Adams. In 1927, can you believe that? 1927, that was a long time ago, right? She started her own business, The Orchid Beauty Salon. It became so successful that she expanded to include hairdressing, beauty, cultural school, and a health clinic. In 1938, she was elected president of the Massachusetts Hairdressers Association, a post that she held for two years. In 1942, she was elected to serve one-year term on the North Adams City Council, becoming the second woman to serve on that body, and was re-elected to serve three terms in 1943, 1946, and 1949. In 1946, she became the first woman city council president, elected to fill an absence during an existing president's absence. She was chairman of the council's airport commission for four years and of the airport licensing committee for six years. She was instrumental in getting the North Adams Airport established. How many of you have been to the airport? You know where the airport is? Yeah. This woman, the airport, is named after. She was, as a result, it was named The Harriman Airport in her honor. In 1950, she was made an honorary member of the Greylock Flying Club. Lottie Harriman accomplished a great deal in her life and made large success for whatever she applied to and paved the way for all of us in politics. So we'd like to honor Lottie Harriman, and we will give the award to Counselor Bona.
Mayor, I could request that this be hung over at the airport.
Yes. Yes. Our next inductee is Lois Quinn, nominated by her nephew Mick Boland, who is here tonight somewhere in the audience. She was born on October 11th, 1924, and raised in North Adams. She graduated summa cum laude from Our Lady of the Elms in 1946. She was the first female probation officer appointed in Massachusetts in 1948. As a probation officer, she was instrumental in establishing emergency shelter for runaway children in Berkshire County. Mrs. Quinn was later appointed Assistant Chief Probation Officer, the highest-ranking female legal officer in Berkshire County for many years. Mrs. Quinn was a founding member of Down East Side, a national nonprofit organization devoted to recruiting adopted families for older children adrift in the foster care On her retirement in 1980, after 32 years of service, Judge Barry wrote, "Lois Quinn is a woman of high intellectual and moral values, values which are desperately needed in dealing with juveniles who appear here before our courts. Her daily living and sound advice have carried them through troubled youth through many bad times and helped their family during crisis and confusion of all levels. In a society where moral values and principles are under constant assault, individuals of lowest caliber are needed to keep concept of the family wholesome and alive." It is my honor to induct Lois Quinn into the Hall of Fame, but mostly, I love her motto. And her motto was, "Make the world better for your being in it." You're welcome to stay right up there with everybody. She got so excited. Our next recipient is a very special person, and I know that my cousin Eileen McShane would be very happy about this award. Connie Tatro, can I call you Connie?
Please.
Connie Tatro has celebrated 30 years, but she's only 27, of running an incredible, amazing home daycare in the city of North Adams. She was nominated for this award by a group of parents who are here tonight and their children, and is recognized for her extraordinary impact that she has on children and their families. Ms. Tatro, Mrs. Tatro, has a bachelor's degree and is currently working to a master's degree in early childhood studies. She is also a very active member of our North Adams School Building Committee. She has the highest quality rating and improvement system daycare certification that the state allows and was very excited to earn that. Her home daycare opened in 1993, doesn't seem possible, and she has served approximately 100 children over the years. Connie is a down-to-earth, dedicated, hard-working, and kind-hearted person. She doesn't stop caring for her children once they leave her house. She attends birthday parties, sporting events, concerts, and anything that her children invite her to. During the pandemic, she held morning virtual circle time to help keep all the kids engaged in their routine and seeing their friends. Did you have fun at circle time? Yeah. Ms. Tatro organizes the children and their families in her daycare to participate in the Fall Foliage Parade, and this past summer built an outdoor stage in her backyard so the children could put on a play for their families. In her free time, she's active in her church and is a mainstay on Sundays, helping coordinate weekend meals for her seniors. The mutual respect that Ms. Tatro builds with the children creates a close atmosphere, not only with the families that she serves, but with the community. She is a true testament of what childcare and early education is all about, and I'm very honored to have you part of this award. Our next inductee is Mrs. Heather Bolger, Heather Putnam, who is currently the Executive Director of Mass Hire, Mass Hire Berkshire Workforce Board. There you go. Mrs. Bolger has served as Vice Chair of the School Committee, being first elected in 1998. She has served terms all the way to 2021. She has served six uninterrupted terms and has worked for three mayors and three superintendents. I just find it funny she got off the school committee when I became mayor, but that's okay. She was appointed by the North Adams Public Schools to represent us on the McCann School Committee for eight years. Mrs. Bolger has served on almost every subcommittee that the school department has had. In November of 2022, Mrs. Bolger was awarded, from the Massachusetts School Committee's Committee, a Lifetime Achievement Award for her service to the city of North Adams and all of the children in our community. She is only one of two North Adams School Committees to ever receive this honor. She has demonstrated a passion for quality education and the idea that it's the community's responsibility to provide resources that invest in our children's future. Additionally and beyond the school committee, Heather has proven herself to be a fine community partner. I am proud to call Heather a trusted colleague, but most importantly, a friend. Heather Bolger. And last but not least, talk about breaking that ceiling, Morgan Goodell. Morgan Goodell was born and raised in northern Berkshire. She graduated from McCann Technical School and BCC and also the Massachusetts Fire Academy. Morgan began her fighter-fighter journey on the Clarksburg Fire Department, where her dad was a volunteer. She spent four years responding to calls, attending training sessions, and company meetings while listening all she could hear about the fire service. She appeared on the dean's list for semesters at BCC and earned an associate's degree in fire science. She began her employment at the city of North Adams in 2020 as a 911 dispatcher for the police department. She attended the fire academy, where she successfully completed a 10-week training course and graduated in October of 2022. She is the first female firefighter in the history of the city of North Adams. Morgan's courage and success in pursuing a non-traditional path deserves to be recognized. Morgan will no doubt continue to influence those around her and challenge all those men she works with. As she advances her career in the fire science program and in the fire department, I wish you all the best. That concludes our presentation, and I thank you all so much and all that you do for our community, and I especially thank everyone who was in attendance tonight. Thank you. [applause]
I don't know. There's one thing that's not like the others. [laughter]
Very much so. In other ways.
Keith, your face is red.
Huh? Oh.
He's got a red face.
I even wore my tall boots today. So I will recess for two minutes while people make their way out. I'm sure they don't want to stay. There we go. [laughter] You're welcome. Council Paper 9513-31, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 7, Section 7-11 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding the Change of Permit Prices. Counselor Bona, do we have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to postpone for two more meetings, and I'll have the mayor give an update.
Second meeting in April. Do we have a second?
No, I have a question. Can I?
Here's you.
Go ahead.
Okay, second.
We need a second. I'll second.
Counselor, and now Counselor Harpen.
All right, thank you. So this is just for the transfer station and the sticker price, I believe. I'm wondering if we should just postpone this now, considering we only have a few months left now in the fiscal year, and we're going to review it again for the fiscal year coming up? Maybe we should postpone it until budget season, because it's not really part of the fees. It's kind of separated from it, so we might be able to just postpone it till then, because we're going to be reviewing it then again during budget season.
Yeah, I mean, I, through the chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I personally don't have a opinion, strong opinion, one way or another, but again, I'd like the mayor just to give an update on where we are with fees and fines. So, and again, this falls within her budget, so you may want to have an opinion on that.
Overall, with the whole fees and all of that, it's been just a challenging task. You know, the way that it was presented back to us, we're editing all of the work that Counselor Bona has done, and it's been a very slow process because that's not all we have to do. As far as the transfer station fees, I totally agree with you, Counselor Harpen. If we could postpone that till we get through budget, it would only make sense, because we're only going to come in with another request. So whatever the council pleasure is, but I will tell you that going through these ordinances, you think your piece was a lot, getting all the fees set, getting all the writing in the ordinances, especially when you reference back and the ordinance has been changed but yet not updated. So we've got a little bit of a mess of trying to figure out where we start and then where we end with your recommendations.
So, when would those dates be? Let's see.
Do you want to move them to the end of May?
Yeah, I meant to postpone to the end of May.
Second meeting in May. That way, and then that way, we may even have some numbers to crunch for that.
Yep.
Okay, we have a Counselor Barbo.
Yeah, could I just ask again? I know we discussed it at the meeting four weeks ago. We have not seen, as a council, the fees from inspection services, the changes to those. They have not come to the council, and I believe you requested that they could be sent to us from someone, but I would like to be able to see what it is that's being revised, because they have yet to come to us.
Counselor Bona, do you want to address that?
Through the chair, Mayor, can you have your executive administrator, is that, no, is that the right term? Sorry.
My executive assistant.
Yes, sorry. Forward the latest updated spreadsheets to all the counselors.
Sure, happy to do that, and I want to get this process done, but just remember, I am not the clerk for the city council. So happy to help you, but remember that I'm not the clerk.
Well, I just know she has the most updated spreadsheet. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, I don't know who has the, I thought that your office had the most updated thing. Also, I will follow up and make sure that the clerk requests it too, if possible.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Good point there.
Anything else? We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 11,826, An Ordinance Amending the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams Regarding the Various Fees Established in City Code. Counselor Bona, you want to make a motion?
Aye. Again, well, that one, I think, again, I would probably just postpone till the second meeting of...
Do we have a second?
Second. Second meeting in April, is that what you said?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Counselor Bona, Counselor Harpen, and do we have any more discussion? Counselor Wilkinson.
Through the chair to Counselor Bona. When you're considering the changes in fees, there's a new one that has to be developed for short-term rentals. Is that being considered in your deliberium?
Again, that hasn't come forward through the chair, through that department yet.
In which department would that be presented to you?
That would be under, most likely, Building Department.
I'll contact them.
That would need to come to us for approval also, so we haven't even discussed that yet.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,218, Mayor's Communication Number 10, Requesting Review of the Taxi Ordinance by the Public Safety Committee. Update again from Counselor Sapienza.
Yes, the update is that, again, we're working on the language of the ordinance. Lieutenant Beverly was going to assist in writing one of the sections of ordinance and submitting a draft to the Public Safety Committee. That hasn't happened yet, and as soon as I receive that, I'll call another Public Safety meeting and proceed from there. We can review and move forward from there.
How about the first meeting in May?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone it to the first meeting in May.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Council Paper 12,242, no, we already did that one. Yay. Council Paper 12,243, Mayor's Communication Number 34, Recommending the Appointment of Michael McCarron to the North Adams Airport Commission for a term to expire March 13th, 2026.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Oh, whoa.
I'm sorry.
I do have a question through the chair to the mayor, if possible. I'm wondering if you could share with us, and I'm sure you're aware that last year, the ordinance was changed on membership to the airport commission. Is Mr. McCarron taking the role of a, is he a resident of North Adams, or is he taking on the role as Mr. Keplinger, so he's not taking a seat as?
He is a resident of North Adams, and he is not taking the role as a pilot because he is not a pilot, so we will be looking for another pilot to be on the board.
Okay, so he's not, it was aviation experience. He doesn't fill that role either.
Not that I am aware of, no.
So he's not replacing Mr. Keplinger's role?
Well, he's replacing him physically, person to person, but not as the role of a pilot.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome. Okay, any other questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Who made the motion that came from over here? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Who made the motion?
Motion.
Counselor Sapienza. And then who was the second? Counselor Wilkinson. Counselor Wilkinson, okay, thank you. Oh, okay, so, motion carries. Council Paper 12,244, Mayor's Communication Number 35, Recommending the Appointment of Cody Chamberlain to the Youth Commission for a term to expire March 13th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselor Wilkinson, Counselor Barbo. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Council Paper 12,246, Mayor's Communication Number 37, Recommending the Appointment of Taylor Gibbo to the...
Order.
I'm sorry?
We skipped one?
Might they just stick together?
12, 12, 12, 245.
I'm sorry, they stuck together. Mayor's Communication Number 36, Recommending the Appointment of Colin Todd to the Housing Authority for a term to expire July 1st, 2027.
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Bona. Counselor Wilkinson, discussion?
Yes. Through the chair to the mayor. After all the discussion that was here tonight, there seems to be some reluctance by the people that live there as to whether this should be done or not. Could you just give us a couple words as to why you think that he's the candidate that you'd want to continue on?
So, in response to the gallery, I've had several discussions, emails, comments, commentary with all of them over the last 15 months. I hear exactly what their concerns are. It is a little bit more deeper than just Mr. Todd. I did have a conversation with Mr. Todd and asked him if he could continue to serve in this capacity under the guides that, under my administration, the people of the high-rise come first, and that I would like their meetings to be more open, more welcoming to the tenants' association, and he said that he would be willing to do that. With all that being said, if I find that he does not do that, then he will be removed. I understand what all these people are saying, but I did take that into consideration and have a discussion with him around his appointment, and I am hopeful that we can see a little more, a lot more transparency and openness from that board. I also need to make another appointment on that board, and I'm having a very difficult time finding the right person. And with that, I may come forward next month with a different type of appointment for that board, but the concerns of these people are definitely heard by the administration. It is definitely a concern of what the safety is around that building. Our team was down there last month and had a community meeting in both buildings, and we will continue to do that quarterly. It's work in progress, but I did speak to Mr. Todd about the openness of the meetings and listening to the tenants and really working a little bit more with the tenants' association, and he said he was willing to do that. I haven't been able to measure that quite yet, so we will see. Excuse me. Excuse me. You have an opportunity to speak at the beginning and at the end, but not on each individual item. Okay, I'm not familiar with how it works. Okay, that's why I explain it. I'm just going to go to somebody else, but did you have a follow-up?
Just quickly, when we get to, when we start voting on this, could I ask for a roll call?
Counselor Bona, then Counselor Barbo. Counselor Barbo?
Yes, to the mayor. Again, would you be able to share? There are currently three vacant seats on this board of five. Mr. Todd's appointment did expire in July. Will he be filling the role of an empty seat, or will he be refilling a role as the union representative for the board?
As the union representative.
So he's gone through the process, and your office has received, as required by mass general law, five appointments of at least two to five people from a union representative?
I had reached out to different unions, not only within the city, some of the people that I know through the post office, to see if I could reengage people to join the board and represent the union component, and no one that I asked wanted to. If someone of that qualification is interested and they want to reach out to me, that's fine, too, but to say that there was an actual posting, Counselor Barbo, there was not.
Okay, so just to clarify...
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Bona. Counselor Wilkinson, discussion?
Through the chair to the mayor, after all the discussion that was here tonight, there seems to be some reluctance by the people that live there as to whether this should be done, done or not. Could you just give us a couple of words as to why you think that he's the candidate that you'd want to continue on?
So, in response to the gallery, I've had several discussions, emails, comments, commentary with, with all of them over the last 15 months. I hear exactly what their concerns are. It is a little bit more deeper than just Mr. Todd. I did have a conversation with Mr. Todd and asked him if he could continue to serve in this capacity under the guise that, under my administration, the people of the high-rise come first, and that I would like their meetings to be more open, more welcoming to the tenants' association. And he said that he would be willing to do that. With all that being said, if I find that he does not do that, then he will be removed. I, I understand what all these people are saying, but I did take that into consideration and have a discussion with him around his appointment. And I am hopeful that we can see a little more, a lot more transparency and openness from that board. I also need to make another appointment on that board, and I'm having a very difficult time finding the right person. And with that, I may come forward next month with a different type of appointment for that board. But the concerns of these people are definitely heard by the administration. It is definitely a concern of what the safety is around that building. Our team was down there last month and, and had a community meeting in both, both buildings, and we will continue to do that quarterly. It's work in progress. But I did speak to Mr. Todd about the openness of the meetings and listening to the tenants and really working a little bit more with the tenants' association, and he said he was willing to do that. I haven't been able to measure that quite yet. So we will see.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. You, you have an opportunity to speak at the beginning and at the end, but not on each individual item.
Okay, I'm not familiar with how it works.
Okay, that's why I explain it. I'm just gonna go to somebody else, but did you have a follow-up?
Just quickly, when we get to, when we start voting on this, could I ask for a roll call?
Counselor Bona, then Counselor Barbo. Counselor Barbo?
Yes, to the mayor. Again, would you be able to share? There are currently three empty, or three vacant seats on this board of five. Mr. Todd's appointment did expire in July. Will he be filling the role of an empty seat, or will he be refilling a role as the union representative for the board?
As the union, as the union representative.
So he's gone through the process, and your office has received, as required by Mass General Law, of five appointments of at least two to five people from a union representative?
I had reached out to different unions, not only within the city, the, some of the people that I know through the post office, to see if I could re-engage people to join the board and represent the union component, and no one that I asked wanted to. If someone of that qualification is interested and they want to reach out to me, that's fine, too. But to say that there was an actual posting, Counselor Barbo, there was not.
Okay, so just to clarify, you did not use the process under Mass General Law of you reaching out to a union representative who in fact would contact the local union representatives?
I did, I did not contact the union stewards.
Okay.
Counselor Bona?
Yeah, through the chair. Mayor, you know, this is unique in the sense that, you know, the housing authority is run by the state, and we have appointees that are on that board that are appointed, you know, by you and approved by us. Is it a case because some of the concerns we heard are the opinion, or is that, you know, some of these things may not even be state-approved and state? Is the board have, is, is the board have a strong influence particularly what happens at those facilities, or is it really more state, other state officials that oversee it and, and inspect it and look at it?
A lot of, a lot of the operation of the actual facility is governed by HUD or the state. However, this board is put together to oversee the administration, the Housing Authority Director, the staff, the issues of the, the tenants', the operation, like almost like the day-to-day operation with regulations. And I can honestly say that some of the atmosphere down there, coming from the administration, has caused people to say, no, we don't want to get involved. I think people overall want to help the tenants, but it's, it's a difficult board to fill. We did have a very nice gentleman who sought out himself and got appointed as the government, governor's appointee, and he since has, has just passed. So we have that gap to fill. We currently have a tenant and two other people on the board. But again, the function of it thus far hasn't really been geared towards listening to the tenants. Right, I totally agree with you. And that's why the conversa, that's why, excuse me, that's why the conversation...
Quiet while people are speaking.
That's why the conversation was had with Mr. Todd. But I've been at the housing authority several nights. I've been to their community meeting.
Go upstairs?
I've been, yes, I've been, walked every single floor and every single hallway. And I've been invited to some of the tenant association events, and I will, I'll just disclose to this, one of the things I'm thinking is, and I did get the city solicitor approval, is to appoint myself to this board. So I can have direct contact with what's going on, understand the administration, understand what's going on, but I still am on the fence about that because I have 5,000 other things to do. But this is, this is so important to me that I've already inquired with the city solicitor if that is such a good appointment, if, and if that is all feasible. Because I cannot find someone that fits the bill, and I say that, fits the bill in order to balance regulation with need, with emotion, and that's what we need on this board. We need somebody who can help us facilitate what the needs are of that building as far as the tenants, and as well make sure that we have compliance checks. And I agree that that whole facility needs to be more user-friendly. But I don't run the day-to-day operation. I have a board that governs that.
Counselor Barbo?
I've been very active as liaison to this board. I have not missed any meetings, whether they be in-person or remote. And I have found and seen folks attending that meeting met with hostility and intimidation in these meetings. That includes myself, where I am appointed to sit in a corner and not allowed to speak, or I've actually had Mr. Todd order members of the Disability Commission who attended a meeting to return their agendas. They were not entitled to have those, and it has been nothing but a hostile atmosphere. I'd like to read to you what the role of this board actually is, because I feel I sit here many times as a new counselor, and I have no idea we get a name on a piece of paper. But this is the role, according to Mass General Law. Mass General Law, Chapter 121B, Section 5. The purpose of the North Adams Housing Authority is not simply to rule over 150 Ashland Street and 45 Spring Street. It is to oversee the clearance of substandard, decadent, or blighted open areas, or the provision of housing for families or elderly persons of low income, or engaging in a land assembly and redevelopment project, including preservation, restoration, and relocation of historical buildings. It is not strictly to oversee this board. This board is responsible for hiring the executive director and overseeing all aspects of that, and that is not what is happening in these meetings. These meetings are represented always with, as Mr. Todd has noted to me in multiple communications, with their attorney, the board's attorney, not the city solicitor. They are represented at every meeting by their attorney, Steve Neary. Meeting minutes for these meetings are not submitted to our city clerk, as this is a housing authority board. The tables of power here are definitely tipped. There have been over 40 complaints to the mayor's office individually. I have met with the mayor regarding the complaints. I have forwarded the tenants' association, which I was instrumental in implementing, to the Disabilities Commission, and they have never, ever been addressed in a board meeting, ever, period. Their, their complaints are not being addressed by this board at any meeting, period. It's not happening. Therefore, I would ask this committee to consider that this board is in dire straits. The tenants are not being represented properly, and we, we definitely need to change up the board members.
Amen. Thank you.
Counselor Obasahen?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Barbo, for, for sharing that, because that was, one of my questions was to ask what exactly is the, the role of the board, but through the, Counselor, Counselor to the, to the mayor, question. So there's a lot of emotions in here, and I've heard a lot of, I would say negatives about, about Mr. Todd. Is there anything positive that we can share that, what, I guess my question is, what is the, the timeframe of the, of the person that's serving in this role? And in that time, what has been, is there anything that you can speak of that has been accomplished?
As Counselor Barbo said, the, the board, as it functions right now, functions under the, the guise, I would say, of the executive director, and they're missing their insight of the tenant's voice, the tenant's issues. And that was the conversation that was had with Mr. Todd. Can you be more open? Can you be more willing? Can you, you set the agenda, you set the tone, as a chairman, not the executive director. I mean, I, I relate it to how we run the school committee. I am chair of the school committee. I set the agenda. The superintendent brings me the agenda. We work together on that. That should be the same thing, not just walking in five minutes before a meeting and getting an agenda and rule with an iron fist. That's not how it, it, it should work. And again, in his defense, he's only subject to the environment that he knows, and he is willing to try. And if he doesn't try according to my likings, I will remove, remove him. I understand that there is some friction, but overall, not maybe this population, but overall, he, as a union representative, the staff likes him, a lot of people in the community like him. I think he only knows what he knows, and I want to believe that he's capable in doing better.
Counselor Barbo?
If I can ask, to, to speak to that, this isn't a personality contest. Mr. Todd may be a fabulous person. I can't answer that question. What I can say is, I did try to meet with him as liaison and introduce myself to the board. I was immediately met with an email from the executive director requiring my presence with a meeting with her attorney, to which I brought to your attention. And you, the city solicitor recommended that I absolutely should not take that, because this, this attorney and executive director felt they needed to explain my role as the liaison.
I do remember that.
This has been extremely hostile. Mr. Todd, I know that there has been some training. This board is required to be training extensively as to housing law, and then be certified with the clerk's office, that that has happened through the Secretary of State. These people have not taken, taken this training, and it is in complete dysfunction. One, I believe, has now taken place of that. This board is not operating within the guise of the Massachusetts.
I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with you on some aspects. Other aspects, you know, I'm just, I, I agree with you on some aspects of that.
Anyone else have anything? Counselor Sapienza?
Yes, after hearing these folks here tonight, and Counselor Barbo did contact me several months ago regarding this issue, and it is a, it is not a good thing that these people are living in the conditions that they are. In good conscience, I don't believe I could accept this appointment, approve this appointment, or vote in favor of it at this point. Thank you.
Mayor?
Can I just make a comment? The board members themselves can't control the day-to-day activities within it. I do certainly agree that they should be more aware and more informed of the complaints of the tenants. But when a dog is locked in an apartment and pees so much that the urine comes underneath the door, a board member, a, a board member can't do anything in the moment. That is the management of the building. But should the board member know that that happens repetitively, and that is a complaint of the tenants? Absolutely. And then that goes back to enforcing your lease and, and your pet policy and all of those things. The board should be checking in on those things and making sure the administration is doing that, doing all of that.
Anyone else?
I have nothing.
Excuse me.
She's fine.
Please.
Hey, I'm trying.
I understand, but you, we're trying to listen, we're trying to deliberate, please. We know how you feel, we understand.
Okay, I don't think you understand because you don't live there, okay? You must have a nice house on Blackman Street, I'm sure.
Counselor Bona?
Yeah. Through the chair. Mayor, I mean, first, are these positions are volunteer?
Yes.
Yes, and the, is this somewhat of a case of, because as you do have other open positions that they're just difficult to fill, so by not putting Mr. Collin there, the seat could just be empty in general?
Correct.
And then there's no one there?
We won't have a quorum.
You know, so, so it feels a little bit like it's Mr. Collin, or we might not have nobody for a while.
True. You'll be stuck with me.
Yeah.
And also to clarify, if we don't, if they don't have enough board members and they don't have a quorum, they can't meet.
Right.
Anyone else? I think Counselor Wilkinson asked for a roll call vote. I would think that's a good idea. I'm speaking with your outside voice. Barbo?
No.
Bona?
Yes.
Harpen?
No.
Obasahen?
No.
Thank you.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Sapienza?
No.
Shade? Wilkinson?
No.
Blackmer?
No.
Six noes, motion to decline.
I don't know, may I interrupt for a second? So under the, I don't know, under suspension of rules, I don't have a paper, but at this point, if this motion fails, I need to make an emergency appointment. So can I put on the floor that the emergency appointment until another person is sought is me? I mean, I, I, I've got to keep the board going, and I've got to address the needs of these people, and I did, I don't have it with me tonight because I didn't think we were going to get into this.
I would say the building's not on fire, it's not an emergency.
Okay.
So bring yourself to the next meeting.
I'll bring myself to the next meeting. Thank you.
Unless you want to hold a special meeting with 20, 48 hours' notice just to do that. I have no room in my schedule, so I won't be there. Oh, so motion fails. Let's move on. Okay, Council Paper 12,246, Mayor's Communication Number 37, Recommending the Appointment of Taylor Gibbo to the North Berkshire Vocational Regional School District, I'm just, a school committee, to fill the unexpired term of Diane Parsons. Mayor?
So as the communication reads, Mrs. Parsons has moved to Adams, and the North Berkshire Regional School District has a, a different policy than the North Adams School Committee, and that is that the superintendent vets, vets applications or asks people, and then we come, he makes a recommendation to us, and we present it to the council. So Superintendent Rosnan is here to speak on this topic tonight. So Superintendent?
Superintendent, thank you for waiting.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. Absolutely. Would, would, the mayor's recommendation in my conversation with her is 2016 graduate of our school, that many of you are familiar with and will find, is, is a great addition to the McCann School Committee to fill Diane Parsons, who moved out of the city and moved into Adams, so unfortunately left that vacancy while we're going. Taylor Gibbo is a 2016 graduate of the school, works at Adams Community Bank, involved in the community, and we think makes an excellent choice to fill that position. And members, I've got George, and I'm, Canalis, and Peter Breen, and Chair Gary Rivers with us tonight, and obviously with myself, giving us another youthful voice that can kind of give us some other, other ideas in the committee. So we, we would appreciate your support of the mayor's recommendation and ours to appoint Taylor, who is here, to our school committee to fill this term.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Pick one and then wait. Counselor Wilkinson. Any discussion? Counselor Harpen?
I would just like to thank Ms. Gibbo for stepping up, and, and I, she's someone young and approaching something different in, in the community, and getting involved in your community, and the school McCann is a, is a wonderful school, and, and it's, it's a great committee already, so, great board. So thank you very much for stepping up, and I'm sure they're going to appreciate your, your voice. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you both for coming. Council Paper 12,248, Amending Chapter 2, Section 2-1. Okay, this is a communication. Council Meetings Regarding Meeting Cancellations and Filing with the City Clerk. Counselor Bona, you want to go over your communication?
Yeah. Oh, okay. Sorry. Things are out of order, so, all right. I'm just going to summary what we have here, but basically, the ordinance is that we currently have in our books, we don't get into how and why and when we should cancel meetings, and it has varied over the years, at least that I have served. And, you know, we did have a recent cancellation due to the snowstorm, which would make complete sense because literally no one could move. But, believe it or not, in the past, police have driven city clerks to the city council chambers during snowstorms so that we could open the meeting and close them, just so if there wasn't a quorum. City council has, I know, former city clerk Abucy, she remembers actually having, being in council when there was no power in the building, but they still held, held their meetings. So I think one of the reasons they probably always had them is there was no ordinance that said we could cancel them. But I did, you know, speak with Counselor Blackmer, and... But I did, you know, speak with Counselor Blackmire, and she did remind me that we did cancel one in 2015, did you say?
I think it was 15.
2015?
14 or 15.
But I do also remember, I want to believe, one meeting when we had a former Counselor Hopkins, that again, it was a storm, and there was only a few of us, and we came in and we opened the meeting just to close it because we didn't have quorum, which doesn't make sense. So, the main thing is, I want to sort of put in the books, what do we do when we cancel a meeting? What are the rules? What do we follow? But where I feel the debate might be, and again, I'm going to recommend that this get forwarded to the General Government Committee, but where the debate might be, is do we just cancel it and wait till the next meeting? Or do we cancel it and wait and postpone to the following Tuesday? We cannot just have it go to the next day. I did talk to the Attorney General, and if it is to be, if it's canceled, it has to be reposted, so you would need at least 48 hours' notice. So, one suggestion would be, do you just have it the following Tuesday? Where my concerns are, is sometimes we have agendas that pile up. If you get two big agendas that happen to go on top of each other, we could have a very long meeting. Or also, is it fair to certain things that are on the agenda? There are times we have three weeks between meetings, and is it fair to certain things that are on that agenda to have to wait five weeks to get approval? Obviously, we can do special meetings, but I feel with other committees and commissions and things like that, if a meeting gets canceled, they reschedule it as soon as possible. So, that's where the debate might fall within general government. The second part of this is, I think, pretty clean cut. We do have in our ordinance that our agendas still get delivered to us either by mail or police, and we don't do that anymore, so that simply should just be removed. So my recommendation is to send this to general government, to come back in the second meeting of April.
Okay, we've already pretty loaded our second meeting in April. And there's not, I doubt-
First meeting of May.
Okay, well, we move it to the first meeting of May.
And actually, we're in communication, so we've got to wait till we get the ordinance anyway.
I have a conflict with the first meeting in May.
What's that?
I have a conflict of calling the meeting the first week, I'll have to call it before.
Second meeting of May.
No, 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 I have, I'm calling a whole month of May.
Oh, yeah.
I will have the meeting before I leave.
First, uh-
No, it can come back, but I won't be able to give the report. There's other people on the committee that can give the report.
Anyway, this is still the communication, so that's my communication.
So, we'll move on to the ordinance. Council paper 12,248, an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Section Two-Dash-One, entitled "Council Meetings Regarding Meeting Cancellations and Filing with the City Clerk." So the motion would be, instead of the whole post, move to a second reading, publish, blah, 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 just to-
Forward this to general government, because I do believe, I think one of the things I have in here is about, you know, having it go to the next day. That can't happen, so that would have to be amended out anyway. But, you know, for the, I think, again, where the debate is, is do we just automatically cancel until the next meeting, or do we, you know, have a meeting before that?
Part of the debate is, do we even bother paying all this money to publish something since we've canceled two meetings in 14 years?
But then, but then we, well, but it's not in the books of how we deal with canceling meetings, and we've done it different ways, so I just feel it should be, you know, consistent and-
We could also add it to council rules.
That's a suggestion.
I mean, and I, we'll save it for the meeting and the next thing. Counselor Wilkinson?
Was there a reason we can't do the second meeting in April?
I'm not going to be here. Um, we've got a heavy agenda. We keep, we postponed a bunch of stuff.
I have a feeling the report will be, we're working on it.
Okay, that's fine.
It's not going to-
I'm not worried about it. We better not have to cancel a meeting because it's snow for the next seven or eight, or 10 or 12 months, or another 14 years.
Okay.
I'm not worried about it.
Counselor Harpen?
I really can't support this, only because I think it's just going to be, I personally, I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money to put anything in or changes here. This ordinance has been in place since 1965, so we've had this ordinance for 60 years. There hasn't been any problem. We may have a storm that we can't get to city council chambers every eight years, maybe five years, right? So we're legislating for one occurrence every five to eight years. And it just doesn't, I wouldn't spend the money on it. I just, I wouldn't spend the time on it. Also, I went to a meeting recently, I, Council President Blackmire was there as well this weekend, Beakingen Hill in the Berkshires, Senator Paul Mark, and they discussed how they are going to be working on legislation for remote meetings going forward and hybrid meetings. So I think that's where we should be paying attention. That's, that's what we should be able, that's what we should be legislating for, not specifically having our meetings in council chambers if there's an emergency. So if the mayor says this is a snow emergency, well, then we're going to, you know, we don't have to have the meeting in council chambers, because that's the only thing that really in our ordinance is limiting us to having a remote meeting. It says it, we have to be in council chambers. So if you have a remote meeting, we will not be in council chambers.
Except there was no power, no internet in most places.
Correct. I mean, there are- I'm talking about ordinance.
I totally agree with you.
Right? So, I mean, really forward-thinking, I think remote meetings and hybrid meetings are where we should be looking. And I just really, this, I just, I would not support it. If there's an emergency, according to our open meeting law, looking in the open meeting law guide, there's a notice here that says, except in the case of an emergency. So if the mayor says it's an emergency, then it's emergency. A public body must provide the public with notice 48 hours in advance. If there's an emergency, we don't have to give a 48 hours' notice. So, there's a lot in there. I just really don't think at this time, I would wait for the legislation to go in and be enacted for more technically advanced options.
Okay. So, okay, Counselor Bona?
Yeah. So my response to that is, and of course, you know, I'm going to sort of use Counselor Barbo as an example of when it comes to things that are written and how we should follow rules. Well, again, part of this says we should be getting our agenda either delivered by mail or police, so we should be updating that ordinance anyway. That is what it's saying we're supposed to be doing. Now, we can just ignore that, and then we can say, well, we'll ignore that, and we could ignore other ordinances. It just happens, you know, we have, we clean up ordinances all the time.
I agree, but we just spent $2,000 to publish the, of our budget. Do you know how expensive it is? If the state changes the law so we can just pay a much lower fee and publish it on iBerkshires, which some communities actually do, then that's fine, but I, my thing is, making some of these changes, I understand, it went through the whole book, there's going to be a lot of things that are in violation of open meeting law, including this, but it also says in there that state laws in most places at the end or somewhere, state laws supersede. So I agree that we should clean things up, but I can't justify taxpayer dollars when we're cutting positions and worrying about ordering paper and postage and, you know, overtime, to worry about posting things to change language like that. But I understand your point. Your motion was to send it to general government with a return date of May 1st, is that correct?
Yes.
There was a second. Any more discussion on that motion? Counselor Barbo?
Yeah, I'd just like to respond to Counselor Barbo liking to follow rules. Counselor Barbo does like to follow rules, and I don't think it is at all out of my realm of responsibility to this community to call out and make sure that the city clerks are clerking our minutes properly, according to mass general law. That's not a big fetch. We've been asked to deal with things here in council chambers, and that's what I tried to do tonight. It's not my responsibility to go back and write the meeting minutes according to open meeting law. The clerks should be clerking the meeting minutes correctly. So I'm, I'm going to take the stance on that.
And I didn't mean it as an offense. I meant it as, you know, we have rules, and, you know, there's, we get, we get reminded when we're not following the rules, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, which the motion is to refer to general government with a return date of May 1st. All in favor of that?
Yes.
Nay.
Opposed?
Nay.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Six yays, two nays. Counselor Harpen and Counselor Sapienza.
What about you?
I didn't say nay, I said yea. Council paper 12,249, mayor's communication number 39, issuing a proclamation in support of Transgender Visibility Day. Sorry, I didn't.
I had this all set for Counselor Shade, who's not with us tonight, but I will present her with a proclamation or drop it off at her house. So this is dated March 31st, 2023, whereas Transgender Day of Visibility is held every year on March 31st to recognize the generations of struggle, activism, and courage that have brought our country closer to the full equality of transgender and gender non-binary people. And whereas this day is dedicated to celebrating transgender people, raising awareness of discrimination faced by transgender people around the world. And whereas the city of North Adams in Massachusetts strives to be an inclusive community in which our residents not only take great pride in our diversity, but aim to provide safety, prosperity, equality, and hope for all who live and work in our city. Whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance memorializes the people who we have lost and is designated to celebrate the lives of transgender people while working to educate the public and remove transphobia from society. And whereas through the Day of Visibility, we hope to induce moral responsibility and tolerance and lift the restrictions of the rights of transgender people. Now therefore, I, Jennifer A. Maxi, Mayor of the city of North Adams, do proclaim March 31st, 2023, as Transgender Day of Visibility, and call upon the residents to strongly recommit to trans inclusion at all levels, to provide support to the people who are trans and gender expansive, and to their families and friends, and to advocate for their protections at all levels. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry Counselor Shade couldn't be here. Sit back, to the beginning. Application submitted by Christian Richardson to be granted a license to drive a taxi cab for OTT taxi.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Counselor Oleskowitz, Counselor Sapienza, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
One, two. Opposed?
Nay.
Seven yays, one nay. Counselor Wilkinson is a nay. Okay, let's move on to the agenda. This is open forum, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. There will not generally be a comment or a conversation back and forth, but it's for you to bring something to our- Excuse me, let me finish, please.
I understand. I bet he has something.
But you're not the only one in the room, I'm sorry, but there's all these other people who might not know. So.
You know, you're driving me nuts.
So-
I didn't mean, I didn't mean to be mean to you, but you should be nice to people. Come on.
I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought.
It's double standard in this place. I'm just sick of what people are doing, treating people like people with disabilities like crap. And what those people are going through.
Counselor Blackmire, could you just let him speak?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm just trying to get, I was going to say, count, Mr., name an address for the record.
Okay. My name is Eric Wilson, I live at St. Joe's Court. Those people are going through a lot of stuff. I was at that meeting, and rules are good, but if rules are more important than people, it's wrong. That's my, that's my motto. I say that to people there, to people I say that to, I say that to my mother, I say that to anybody, because I'm not afraid to tell people that. We should be open to this. And that guy that shot some people, he's a victim because someone kept making fun of him because they won't stop talking. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous, because I have a disability, and people make fun of me constantly. You know how hard when you tell someone, please don't do that, and they do it anyways? You know, I'm glad you've already known and helping those people, because they've been coming to us constantly. And I went to the meeting, and they treated me like dirt, like, you stay over here. I got a little upset with them, but I calmed down after that. But I'm not perfect. I am a lovable person that everybody knows who I am, but I will speak up when somebody is doing something wrong, you know? I get carried away at times, but I have compassion, and I didn't mean to be mean to her. But, please, please, don't work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Now. This is an opportunity to speak to the council on an issue of municipal significance. You have two minutes, and, but it's not generally a conversation, we don't normally reply, unless there's a statement of fact or some situation. So, sometimes, the only reason I'm clarifying is because sometimes people come and they have questions, and we can't answer them because we can't deliberate about it. So, who would like to approach the bench, approach the mic next? Go ahead. Name an address for the record, you have two minutes.
I'm Robert Smith, I live at 163 Nord Street. I wasn't going to speak tonight at all, but when all these people have these issues in those two buildings, the high-rise buildings, these are residents like we are of this city. And this raises a really serious concern that they need help, as any of us would need help. So we can't let this slide at all. We've got to do something to help these people. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Go ahead.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Squinty Street. I would like to remind the council president that this is not an autonomous board, and that you are bound by the same laws of the city, the state, and the federal government and the Constitution. And the Constitution does not stop at the council chamber door. At the meeting of 2/28/23, my right to free speech was violated by you, when you told me to sit down because of a personal attack. And there are consequences for your action. And that has, oh, oh. But anyway, I have turned this over to the ACLU for investigation. And you cannot change your words, because I also sent a recording of that meeting. This is a serious violation of my constitutional rights and my civil rights to free speech. The city had to pay $20,000 to settle a civil rights lawsuit, and it may happen again. I have had enough, and I'm going to do something about it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Madam President, Madam Mayor, councilors. Gregory Roach, 131 Marion Avenue. I will try to make this quick for two minutes and long agenda reasons. I am asking the council tonight to clarify ordinance 14-5 regarding shooting in settled areas of the city. Relatedly, I also come demanding evidence from the city that a highly contested private shooting gallery in my thickly settled neighborhood, note those words, thickly settled, was correctly inspected by our soon-to-be former chief of police, as the ordinance 14.5 demands. demands. Many neighbors have complained for years that outdoor shooting on a property on Knott's Road is a nuisance, a disruption of the peace, and a violation of this city ordinance. In fact, some of you might remember Chief Wood coming before this body to call those complaints about weapons and, including high-capacity semi-automatic weapons, which are seemingly illegal. He called them noise complaints to this body and did not do anything about it. I have been told of, but have seen no evidence, after a neighbor did a freedom of information request, that there ever was a proper inspection or approval of this shooting range. The inspection supposedly occurred last year. I don't believe it actually happened. As a former member of the zoning board of appeals, I can say pretty certainly that exceptions to ordinance, like a private shooting gallery, generally have to be free of strong objections from multiple neighbors. And as police records will indicate, there have been dozens, perhaps hundreds, of such objections to this private range, beginning long before any such inspection or approval. Regarding section, ordinance 14-5 itself, the North Adams Police Department seems to only enforce the looser 500-foot rule, which is state law, in almost anywhere in the city, rather than the ordinance itself. This is directly ignoring a duly and rightly passed ordinance by this body. A council resolution clarifying that the current resolution, the current residential lots in settled parts of the city are not exempt from the current ordinance would be greatly appreciated. Also, that the North Adams Police should enforce the ordinance before the 500-foot rule, and that moving forward, a new or amending ordinance should be passed, examining whether shooting should be allowed in any residential section of the city, and that any new ranges that would be allowed need to go through a formal approval process in front of whatever certifications there may be. I thank you for your time, and have a nice evening.
Did you get any... I didn't know if he heard. I didn't hear it. Anyone else? Committee reports in minute, I'm sorry, Mayor's updates.
Just to comment on Mr. Roach's comments, we are looking into that situation more, and we are working with the city solicitor on that. But I would love to chat more with you about it. So, a big thing about the storm, I know we had to cancel the meeting, but I just wanted you to know that if we had a meeting on that Tuesday night, we wouldn't have been able to open the building. We were snowed in. We didn't have electricity. We certainly didn't have any remote access here. And while we will always try to help our people, I did not have any resources available that night to go and get the city clerk or anything. But with the storm, even though it was devastating to many of us, the Public Safety Committee and the Emergency Planning Committee, Public Safety Department and the Emergency Management Committee came together. One thing that I just want to point out that was so amazing, as we had a shift change, both the Fire Department and the Police Department said, we're staying, and we want to help the Highway Department clear roads, get trees out of the roads, and make roads passable. So it really was a team effort between the DPW, the police, and fire, and I want to commend all those people who could have really gone home and shoveled their own sidewalks, but stayed to help all of our residents. I especially want to give a big shout out to the Emergency Planning Group for opening our shelter and really helping those residents that were without power and that were nervous. And it was a sad time, but it was a fun time at the shelter. So with that, moving on, I know many of you and many of our residents have contacted me about MCLA, and I just want to say that I hear you. I agree with you. I'm very concerned about the potential of a homeless shelter in Berkshire Towers. I do really feel that, yes, there is a humanistic part of that. But as we heard tonight about some of the issues that occur at the high-rise, I'm very concerned that we will have another issue in Berkshire Towers, especially with the fact that MCLA currently isn't running a third shift. So I have expressed my concerns about resources, about public safety, about neighborhood impact, and those conversations are ongoing. But please know, all of you who have reached out to me and the public who has reached out to me, I certainly do hear you. I echo a lot of your concerns, and those are ongoing discussions with MCLA and the state people who are initiating this, this potential shelter. So more to follow on that. Also, a big hot topic is the YMCA. As most of you have heard, we've had a roof failure at the YMCA prior to the storm. This roof has been in disrepair for many years. One of the trellises or the support beam in the roof has shifted significantly over the years and prior to the storm. Therefore, we had to shut the pool down. We are evaluating that structure. We had a structural engineer out a few years, a few days ago, and we're waiting for that. The unfortunate thing is we did have to close the pool, which has several people upset. But I just say, please know that we're working diligently to come up with a resolution. That is another city-owned building that has been neglected. And, you know, the Downstreet Hotel, Downtown, Downstreet Hotel, has offered for people to use their pool who are members of the YMCA. The unfortunate thing is people who swim laps. The pool is very small, but we're more concerned right now about safety and having a complete roof failure there. But we are addressing it as fast as we can. We don't know if there's a temporary fix or we need to go to the long-term fix. But I know some of you have reached out to me, as well as the public, but we are working as fast as we can, but time is against us on that project. All about aging infrastructure. The Brown Street Bridge, as you all are aware, the bridge is closed until further notice, like the Y. That is an aging infrastructure issue. We are working with Mast dot to come up with a temporary solution, so maybe we can possibly open in some fashion. I can't speak to whether that's going to be a possibility, but we are concerned about ambulance access to the West End. They use that bridge to get to West Main Street and that side of the city. We also are concerned that many of us travel that way. But from the last inspection to last week or the week before, it has bowed, and the supporting beam has changed close to three inches, which I'm told in the bridge world is a lot. So that is of concern. But again, we're working with Mast dot to come up with a temporary or long-term fix, and we hope in about 30 days, we'll be in a better place to evaluate and determine what our next steps are. So again, several of you have reached out to me. That's the update hot off the press as of today. On the fun part of things, on Saturday, April 1st, from 11:00 to 1:00, we are having an Easter egg hunt with Easter activities at the Armory, sponsored by the City of North Adams and the North Berkshire Community Coalition. So if you're interested in coming and seeing the Easter Bunny, the Easter Bunny will be present at the Armory. Anybody have anything else?
I was gonna move on. Committee reports in minutes. Counselor Harbin.
Yeah, I just want to say, we did have a traffic commission meeting on February 28th. Counselor Sapienza was there as well. And we did discuss the parking on River Street, specifically within the Holden Street area there. So the police in the Public Service Department did put up a couple of no parking signs right at the bookends, I guess I would say, of the streets. So it really only gives a really small area where you could park on one side of the street. So the issue isn't over. The police are going to be monitoring that area to see if it works, and if the traffic is, it lessens the traffic congestion issues there. So we did discuss it. The signs were put up, and we are going to continue to monitor the situation.
Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Liaison updates and councillors' concerns. Counselor Wilkinson.
Yes, if I could through the chair, ask the mayor for an update.
An update on, I'm sorry.
The burned-out house on Brooklyn Street?
Yes, that, Houghton Street.
Well, yeah, right there, yeah.
Houghton in Brooklyn, yep. That is on our list for demolition. Again, we are waiting on one asbestos report for that packaging. We hope to have that out to bid, but that is one of our priorities. We have five to seven properties that are identified for the demolition bid process.
Time frame?
I'm sorry?
Time frame?
Well, as soon as we can get it out to bid, we'll open up in 45 days, award a contract, and go from there.
I'm sure you know the neighborhood is tired of waiting.
I get that. I'm tired of looking at it, too.
Okay.
I will tell you, on that, on that property, the property owner did approach the city and said he was going to take care of it, and we said we were still proceeding with our plan. So whoever gets there first.
Thank you.
Counselor Harbin.
Yes. Through the chair to the mayor. This is regarding the pool, again, at the YMCA. I've gotten a lot of calls and concerns about it. I'm sure you have as well. And you did give us an update. However, can you give us a timeline as possibly the worst-case scenario and the best-case scenario? And also, would you consider using ARPA funds to fix it?
So we would...
Just trying to get an idea.
Yeah. So, last question first. If we need to, we will use ARPA funds or request for some emergency financing somewhere. We also would go to the state and ask for some help. But right now, until I know what the problem is, I can't make the ask. We also have had some private funds, people come with private funds that said, if you need some help, we can help. Your first question about a timeline, I really can't address that until we see the structural engineer report. And what we're thinking is, could be a temporary solution, is putting in more rafters or support beams. But again, what that timeline is, we won't know until we see the extent of that. Our hope is that we can get a temporary fix. But what I keep reliving in my head, I don't know if any of you remember, many, many years ago, when the roof collapsed at St. Francis Church. That was a pretty scary time, especially for the people who were in the church. And I want to make sure that that pool area is very, very safe before we put people back in that section of the building. So as far as the timeline, maybe by the next meeting, I could give you an update on that. But I would hope that we would have the structural engineer report by the end of this week.
Okay. That would be great, yes.
We're all very anxious.
I understand. But if it's just a small fix, and you're fixing the rafters, is there an idea of how long that would take, rather than if it's a, it's a larger fix? I imagine it would certainly take, you know, maybe up to a year. But if you're just going to fix the rafters, and it's a smaller fix, is it, could it be six months? Could it be three months?
Yeah. Honestly, Counselor Harbin, I can't speak to that right now, but there is some long-term needs in that roof. So while we fix the rafters, we also still need to address the roofing issue as well throughout that whole section. And that's something we were working towards anyways, and then the whole rafter support beam structure issue came up.
Okay.
So I wish I could give you a better answer, but once I get the report and the plan, I'd be happy to.
Okay. I'll ask it in at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Bona?
Yeah, through the chair. Mayor, when the state came and did the inspection on the bridge, did they inspect all bridges at that time, or was it just that one?
At that time, it was just that bridge.
Okay, thank you.
I believe, yes. They have all of our bridges on an annual inspection, and that was the lucky straw, or unlucky straw, however you look at it.
Liaison updates, councillors' concerns. We're still doing that. Anybody else? I just have a question. Mayor, we got the Community Compact Grant for the CNC Plan Study and for the Capital Plan, and what's the status of that?
Yeah, we have both reports in draft format right now. The team, Kathy, Ed, our HR Director, Kara Farrell, and I are going through the CNC right now. There are some things that we would expect more from, from this report that we're not seeing. So we've gone back and asked some additional questions of the Collins Center. But we do have both in draft form. But we're not ready to publicly talk about those things, because internally, we're still reviewing them.
So basically, we're not, they're not really going to have an impact on this year's budget, but next year's budget, maybe?
Possibly.
Okay.
You know how I get when I get on my broom. So, yeah, possibly.
Okay. And if we...
I would hope at least to be able to present a draft to the council by then.
Okay. That was what I was asking. Like, could we see a draft or have a committee or do something?
Yeah, just not in this moment in time, because we're still going through it, and...
Thank you.
I honestly, I'll, I'll tell you that I expected more depth in both than what we got.
I've heard that before from the Collins Center, but...
I knew you were going to say that. I set you up to say that.
Study, study, study.
So as a follow-up, the councillor who loves ordinance, are you therefore sharing with us that there will not be a capital improvement plan coordinated this year with the city council and presented with the budget as required?
Well, we presented one last year, and we will probably present a very similar one this year. The question is, what is the reality of all of that data? Did I answer your question? There was a front part to that.
The front part is, the administration is required to complete a capital improvement plan, six-year plan, with the council to be submitted and approved by the planning board each year with the budget. That did not happen last year.
The planning board piece did not happen. The capital improvement plan was presented through finance and in the packet. I believe we should have probably gone to the planning board as required, and we will certainly do that this year. But again, it may be a document that is a moving target, as they always are.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everybody.